Committee of the whole of city council, May 26th and ask for a roll call, please.
Jacobson. Finnoukin.
Here.
Marquart.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker. O'Leary.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you, and I have not heard from either Dave Baker or Dave Jacobson, so I would expect they may join us in progress this evening. I will turn to our first consideration, community development annual report presentation, City Manager, Gora.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to turn the presentation over to our Community Development Director, Ellen DeVita. We in the past have given updates, annual reports for police and fire, so over time we're trying to get the information of all the departments before the council. This is the next department, and then our goal is by one of the July meetings to have a fiscal year annual report citywide across all departments to be able to provide you an update on all the services that are being provided. With that, I'll turn over to Director DeVita.
Excellent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I think we can maybe call this a mid-year check-in, actually, because it's six months now that I've been here and the department has been reconstituted. With me tonight is Jamie Smers, our Community Development Block Grants Planner and Program Administrator, and Jennifer Diedrich, our Economic Development Coordinator, Jared Heine behind Jen helps us quite often, and then Derek Highland is out a portion of the week, and Brenda Hart is not here this evening. So my thanks to each of them. So our mission is to maintain a high quality of life for our community residents through maintaining diversified and balanced tax base and retention and expansion of local business. Now, when I say balanced tax base, I'm talking about the percentage of the tax base that is residential versus commercial or industrial, because for every dollar of property tax paid by a home, it costs more than a dollar to serve it, and for every dollar paid by a commercial or industrial endeavor costs less. So to have a balanced tax base to provide the services that our residents and our businesses wish, we're better off with a higher percentage of commercial and industrial and a lower percentage. Rule of thumb is under seventy percent at a minimum for residential. The department is often the first point of contact for new and existing businesses, developers and contractors. We're really working to influence investment in our community, so we like that role. Along the way, we maintain the building codes, the comprehensive plan, zoning regulations, and we were trying to facilitate an efficient development process. That's one of the things I've been doing since I've started, is just really looking at our processes and new eyes question things, and everyone in the department's working together well as we look at things. We also administer our Community Development Block Grant. We have about four hundred thousand a year we receive from the federal government. I don't expect you to read these. This, however, is the list of all the boards and connections that the staff members in this department are connected to. So on the left, you've got the city commissions from design review to planning and zoning, and on the right side is a lot of the county commissions that Jen, Derek, and Jamie sit in and have been very active in. And it's quite a list, but it helps us because we need to be connected to and understanding what the community wants, to be able to reach out. When you facilitate investment, you're really knitting a patchwork around the community. So knowing who to talk to often can help bring the right resource to a business deal. So the Building Division, as you understand, is probably the most understandable, I should say, of the department's areas. We had seven hundred and seventeen permits in the calendar year for 2014. This included sixteen commercial and industrial permits and about three hundred and thirty-one thousand in permit fees. This year, we've had two single-family home permits taken out and a third maybe on the way. I received a phone call last week with someone checking on zoning, so that was good news for us. Every winter, Brenda scans permits for archival retrieval, and she reissues contractor licenses, and we're wrapping that up right now. The CDBG, if you've got any questions, I'll have Jamie come up and help us, but last year we had two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, almost two hundred and thirty, in CDBG funds and about seventeen thousand in a revolving loan fund. And that's when we've made rehabilitation program loans, and then someone has sold the property early, some of the money comes back to us, so we have this small revolving loan fund that we can use. Fifteen percent of our funds go to help social service agencies. This is in addition to the funding that comes out of the manager's office, the City Manager's Office. And then we had twenty-two housing projects last year. Seventeen of them were funded through CDBG and five were through TIF, and thirty-nine weatherization and beautification projects. Jamie does a lot of work with Lowe's, and she has a really good relationship. They give us materials, often at cost, and she coordinates a lot of things, including the Carers Day. This year, we had eight hundred volunteers come out and help. Judy Snyder at Public Works helps match people up to projects. Twenty volunteers were out at the airport. Four households were helped with painting and yard work. The municipal building landscaping was spruced up, and downtown alleyway receptacles were painted this year. Marketing is something a little new. On your, on the credenza in front of you, we put one of these. This is the first three ads that Jen and I have written together and put out. This is the inside cover of the Chamber's Visitor Guide, the annual. The second page you'll see is an ad that we bought with the County EDC, and it was in a State of Illinois Innovation Magazine. This third ad was the last one we did, I think, wasn't it, Jen? We're focusing on the buying power over at the college, I should call it the university. We put this in the Deal Makers Magazine, which is a publication that will be put out at ICSC Spring Convention in Las Vegas. So we're starting to market the city. We also just purchased an ad in the county magazine that's printed by Shaw Media. So notable business developments. The Hampton Inn has been very, very good for us. Our hotel motel revenues are way up, almost to the point of doubling for the year, and so we've seen increased inquiries for hotels. We actually had three parties within the last ninety days ask us about hotel sites, and so people are recognizing the potential of our market here. These are new businesses recently opened. This Diddy Hot Dogs over on West Lincoln Highway, just west of Vanny Glidden. We had two video gambling establishments come through for permits, dug out tobacco downtown. The Tangier Hook was the first business to come in, tobacco-oriented, post the new ordinance. We now require freestanding, whereas throughout the city, you may see some retail establishments that are not freestanding. That's a change in the ordinance. Ducky's Beautiful Windows, they're now next to Chilton's. And then we had three specialty grocery stores open this year, which I thought was interesting, two Mexican markets and a Hala Market over at University City, next to the Huddle, right down the row from them. And then Jim Mason is working on his South Fourth project with the Laundromat just opening. It's kind of hard when you do this. You always think, oh, my gosh, did I forget somebody? So I apologize if I have. We have released a permit for the expansion of Fatty's. I think everyone knows through planning and zoning activity that Oakcrest is doing a nice expansion this year. The Antiques Vintage Collectibles and Gifts, she's doubling her size this summer. We have new owners of Barb City Bagels. The First Megan Morrison Building has actually sold to a business owner that will have her salon on the lower floor and wants to live upstairs. We've had interest from the former Codoba on Sycamore for another national restaurant, and we're seeing increased interest on West Lincoln Highway, I think because of Wingstop and Culvers, as well as all the NIU football press that we've been getting. I think one of the bigger sections of news downtown is small-town skates, and they're moving of their retail store and then opening of the indoor skate park in the Fargo Theater. It's been a nice location for kids. She says fourteen to twenty-four, Jen, that's her main market. Jen administers our TIF, and she's gotten all the paperwork done, reports with the state, attending the National TIF Conference. Kathleen Field-Oar is now giving us advice on our TIF programming. We distributed the annual surplus to the taxing bodies, an arrangement put in place when the districts were extended, and as we have in past years, we provided assistance to the Egyptian Theater and Barb City Manor. Special use permits are something in the zoning code that happens when there might be externalities to a neighbor. I always say that you have the right to enjoy your property as long as you don't hurt your neighbor's right to enjoy theirs, and so special use permits are usually when we know there could be an externality. Drive-throughs are often a special use in every city because they can back up roadway access. So this is a quick look at the special use permits that were processed last year in 2014. One was the Culvers, the other the NIU changeable copy signs, actually the big sports murals that have been very good for branding and imaging. The Nearing House Museum, that's good for tourism, it's a nice meeting venue. We've had six cell tower applications in the last six months. It's really an industry that's growing. Our ordinance now allows each to be a special use so that we can control the externalities, the height, the color. Plan developments are usually when you're requesting a variance from the straight zoning, a setback or a height or a use. We've had the library come through this year, University Plaza, as you heard last month, very successful. We had a request on Fisk Avenue that was withdrawn. Montessori School request went through, and then we had a lift station that needed to be put in place and screened by an eight-foot fence. We had some text amendments, and a lot of time was spent on these for Article Seven, Article Thirteen, and Article Five, nineteen, non-conforming situations. Five was in there somewhere, I think I deleted the slide. So that's what I've got. Any questions? And I welcome all your ideas, so.
Questions from council? Ellen, I'd be interested in how the City Community Development Department interfaces with the Chamber Events Coordinator or Manager.
You know, Jen and I are going to have lunch with Matt Duffy tomorrow to talk about that. Jen attends all of the downtown merchant meetings, and within the last few weeks, we have actually had a couple retailers downtown come to us and say they'd like to shake things up and change it a little bit, so we set the meeting with Matt to talk about that. Right now, the city does have a contract, an annual contract with the Chamber, and we provide funding, and they're putting on these events for us.
Excellent.
If you have any thoughts on changes, please let us know.
Okay. And I'm pleased to see the marketing pieces and the marketing initiative, to hear those going into the different publications.
We have a lot to tell the world about, so we're going to start doing it.
Excellent. Other questions of Ellen? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving to our next item, then, we have Engineers Without Borders presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our city engineer, John Luskowski, who's also our interim director of Public Works, who is going to give a presentation on Engineers Without Borders, and one of the projects he's most recently worked on.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
This could be considered my big excuse as to why I missed the budget meeting on past Saturday, because I was delayed in the airport. But I am going, I'd like to share with you a little bit about the presentation here on Engineers Without Borders. From May eleventh to fifteenth, I was down in Guanahato, Mexico, and we were working on solving a problem they have with their drinking water. So to give you a little bit of background, Engineers Without Borders is an organization nationwide, but also has a chapter at Northern Illinois University. So I volunteer there for, or I have been volunteering with the organization for about five years now, and I act as the professional mentor to the students in this organization. There are also two faculty advisors, Dr. Melissa Lenceski, the Geology Department, and Dr. Nicholas Pullman, a mechanical engineering professor. So to give you a little bit of background on Engineers Without Borders, I explained their mission statement, which is, it is a world in which the communities we serve have the capacity to sustainably meet their basic human needs. So the mission statement, along with this vision, is basically saying that we're trying to design and implement sustainable solutions to developing countries as well as making it a transformative experience for the engineering students at Northern Illinois University. So when we go down there and we do a project, there's generally about four steps that we engage in. The first one's the assessment, the second's design, implementation, monitoring, and then evaluation. And with this project, it's been going for about three years now, and we are about in the implementation stage and moving towards monitoring and evaluation. So the project that we're working on right now is a result of some non-traditional agricultural companies doing some farming down in Mexico, and down there, what happened is they were irrigating the fields to the extent so much that the water in the level of the aquifers was becoming severely decreased. And as the amount of water in this aquifer decreased, the contaminant level within the water increased. So now we have a higher level of concentration in the drinking water that people are using for their daily needs. In addition to fluoride, there's also arsenic in the water, which just compounds the problem, but we're tackling one problem at a time with this project right now. So the fluoride standards, according to the World Health Organization, which governs the standards in Mexico, is that they should be around one point five milligrams per liter. Now, there's academic research that indicates that dental fluorosis can occur with concentrations as low as point nine to one point two. When the concentration increases to between three point three and six milligrams per liter, it begins to cause skeletal fluorosis. So as the concentration increases, you're going to see more health problems, and it gets to the point where when the concentration is near fourteen milligrams per liter, you can start experiencing bone fractures. So this is kind of an example of what dental fluorosis looks like, and it impacts the enamel on your teeth and starts them to turn brown and green, and over time, it can cause tooth loss. So in Guanahato, where we're working, the concentrations range from two to twenty-four milligrams per liter, and the average is about eight milligrams per liter. So the good news is, though, the technology that we've been working with the people down in Guanahato is that we can virtually remove almost all of that fluoride in the water. So to give you an overview of where I was at, Guanahato is just a little bit northwest of Mexico City in a very arid climate. In middle of May, it was about eighty-four degrees, but very dry. The rural areas we were working in, this is kind of just a slideshow of what the landscape looks like, but this is a little boy who is working with his flock of sheep. We worked with the local people to see exactly where they were drawing their water sources from. In many cases, it was from rivers, sometimes it was from springs on the mountains. There are some very picturesque places, but a lot of the villages are not easily reached. A big part of this organization is kind of communicating with the people of the villages. So that creates kind of an inherent problem, because my Spanish skills are probably bad at best, I'd say. So it really helps if, and the organization's kind of reaching out, as many students that could become involved would be great, but we were fortunate enough to partner with an organization down in Mexico that had a translator that was able to help us communicate better with the residents down there. So we would do some field testing and determine the initial results. A lot of the individuals were very interested in what was going on with their water. They use it on a daily basis, and the one question that kept coming up is, well, that's great, now we know we have this contaminated water, what can we do about it? So we'd take the samples back to the lab, do some more extensive testing, we'd find our results, and then from that point, I'll introduce the system that we have here. So what this is, is the blue part, they call it a carboy, and on the inside of it, there's a ceramic filter. The ceramic filters- The ceramic filters are made by, that's a cross-section, through the use of clay and sawdust. And I'll pass around the sawdust and the clay a little bit, so you can see what it feels like, and then get a better idea of the actual filter unit itself. So when you're making these clay filters that are inside, I'll hold them up so you can see the inside here. You're mixing the sawdust and the clay together, and then you're putting them into a kiln to fire up, to fire out the sawdust, and then create the voids inside the filter. So for a larger volume of filters, we use a commercial mixer, and then they are still handmade by an artisan. So he's taking the clay and putting it in the filter mold, and then he's putting the hollow part into the filter, and this will be a good time, I'll start passing around the filter, so you can get a better idea of how the process concludes. That filter, then, is turned upside down in this carboy, so that the water has to filter through all of that. So on top of the voids in there that naturally filter out a lot of the pathogens, there's also a compound of silver nitrate that's painted on to further kill any viruses or pathogens in the water. So as the process goes, this is kind of a quick slideshow of how he makes these filters. He penetrates the clay mold with the hollow tube of PVC, and then slowly removes the outside container to the point where you're left with the clay cylinder. That goes into a kiln that looks like this, and lots and lots of cylinders are produced from that kiln. Now, the unit itself is, the base, the unit itself, we try to make it as sustainable as possible, and by that we mean, we try to make it as cheap as possible as well. Because if it's not cheap, then people aren't going to be able to afford it, and they're not going to use it to remove the fluoride. So the base of this, of the carboy, is actually made in a local town of Dolores, where they're known for their pottery. So there's a relationship between the nonprofit organization we're working with in Mexico and the potters. So it helps us get a reduced price on those bases, which brings down the total cost of this unit. In this picture, you'll see what we're beginning to construct is a prototype of a cook stove. Now, in order to remove fluoride from the water, the way it's done is through the use of bone char. And bone char is made when you take a cook stove like this, which is just a couple of barrels placed on top of each other, and then through use of a pyrolysis process, we heat the bones to an exceptionally high temperature, so that burns off all the organic matter, and all you're left with is the carbon. The carbon is a very good receptor of fluoride, and this can extract it from the drinking water. And this here will be an example of the bone char that we produced this last time in Mexico. If you take it, smell this too, it smells like, almost kind of like a barbecue smell to it. The cook stove that you see here is one that Engineers Without Borders has designed back at NIU, and they brought it, they were able to purchase the materials in Mexico to make this a more, a more, it makes it more accessible to the local population down there. So by having the technology that they can fabricate there, this is an example of a cook stove that could be distributed to a community. This wouldn't be something you would distribute to each household, like you would the filter, but a group or a community could purchase this cook stove and then start making their own bone char. So basically, there's another partnership formed between the nongovernmental organization down in Mexico and the butchers. So the butchers have agreed to provide the bones to provide this bone char that turns out like, looking like charcoal, and then it's ground up into bone char. So the last phase of the project that we've been working on now is just finding a way to attach the filter to the bottom of the carboy. And this is kind of an example of what we come up with. It's, I'll pass this around, too. It's still in the development phases, for sure, but we're trying to find a way that it's going to be able to more effectively remove all of the fluoride from the system. So it would kind of attach to the bottom like this. And then the whole thing is set in the unit. So I'm going to pass my notes around with this one, because it is dropping off a little bit of bone char, but that's kind of the system we have right now. So that leads us to the next steps we have, and basically, we're going to have to need to test the life of the, the life of that filter, and develop a way to take that bone char and then find an easy way to replace it. So when it goes poorly on the unit, so it's no longer functioning, we unscrew it and then put it back together. And the final objective will be, then, to start testing iron filings, because we've heard that iron filings remove arsenic from the water supply. So with that, that's kind of all the presentation I have for you tonight. I feel bad, because when Dr. Lenceski, our hydrology professor, does her presentation, she'll actually go get water from the lagoon at NIU, pour it in here, have it filter through, and then drink it at the end of her presentation. So I'm not so bold to do that yet. But thank you for your time.
John, do you have a feel for the life expectancy of the filter? I realize you're testing.
Yeah, the filter itself could last up to a year. It depends on how frequently you're refilling it. It should filter about 2 to 4 liters an hour, so it's going to be enough water for a family for a day.
And then proximity of the kiln and bone char manufacturing process?
Sure.
To the geography where it's used?
Where we were staying was in the central city of San Miguel Alande, and from there, it was our home laboratory and base, and we'd branch out into the rural communities from there. So it'd be about an hour drive out into these communities each direction. So the materials for the clay can be found readily throughout the region, and the remainder of the materials are primarily going to have to start coming from San Miguel. But we'd like to get those cook stoves off into each community, so that as the, as animals become available, they'll have the ability to cook their own bones to recharge the filters at the bottom.
Mayor, if I could just add, I wanted to point out that from time to time, we'd like to bring some of these great stories to the council, so not only the council's aware, but the community's aware of how some city staff volunteer their time. And so everyone's aware that this is what John did on his vacation, and I think one of the fantastic things it shows is how he's applying the technical knowledge he's learned as an engineer and making a difference in the greater world as a whole.
Excellent. John, thank you for the presentation this evening and for your participation in the organization as well. Other questions of John? Yes?
John, when do you anticipate that one of these units will be available to the population?
They're currently using them, at least because what they have right now is better than nothing, basically. So once we get to the point where we can add the final attachment to it, we'll consider it functional. But right now, it's still effective at getting rid of a lot of the pathogens and the bacteria in the water, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay. We will then move on. I would entertain a motion to recess for executive session to discuss personnel as provided for in 5ILCS 120/2C1, purchase or lease of real property, land acquisition, 5ILCS 120/2C5, and pending or imminent litigation, 5ILCS 120/2C11. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded by Alderman O'Leary. All those in favor, I'm sorry, roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnoukin?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight.
Motion passed. Thank you. We will plan to reconvene at the 6 o'clock regular meeting hour.